Okay, Mayor, we do now have seven o'clock.
Okay.
Councilmember Will Coxon.
Present.
Mayor Proton Brown. Councilmember Somerville.
Present.
Mayor Richardson.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present.
Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones Chance. Five present, there's a four.
Move the excuse.
Okay. I don't know why I'm not getting so this in here, but I'm not just in it before. Okay. I was entertaining with saying that can have the fidget of the.
We have to call call for the vote for the execution.
Oh, okay, it's been moved and properly said to excuse absent members all in favor.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, where it stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all." And maintain. Okay, now entertain a motion for agenda approval. Some support is being moved and supported. There's nothing to be pulled off or changed, so let's say all in favor of approving the agenda as it stands. The eyes have it, the agenda is approved. We are now open for public comment. And we'll start calling as soon as I get. Right, thank you.
The first public comment is from Nancy Heine regarding Resolution 2022 dash zero one proposed development on Clark Road eight four five nine four five. This resolution was submitted to the Sustainability Commission last evening. It appears that this resolution needs additional research to more fully discuss the effects in the community, environment, and financials of the city budget. During the presentation, we were told the developer is not interested in preserving any forestation that currently encompasses the properties. Why is that? Why can't there be a compromise to save part of the forest? If the answer is simply that they don't want to, then maybe this would not be the right developer for this project. We were told in lieu of paying any taxes to the city, there would be a pilot, which consists of the city of Ypsilanti actually getting a hundred dollars. Is this true? If so, why would council agree to this type of arrangement? Three, we were told the developer would also pay up to a hundred and fifty thousand a year for city mandated services such as snow removal, garbage pickup, et cetera. Using city financial calculations, it has been estimated the cost for these services will be two hundred and fifty thousand per year. So if that is the case, Ypsilanti will be subsidizing this development for years to come. Can they financially sustain that? Four, we have been told this will greatly reduce the homelessness that is pervasive within our city. In what way? Do homeless have addresses in Ypsilanti? Are they even from Ypsilanti? Five, we have been told one of the buildings will be reserved for seniors. Seniors who currently live in the four eight one nine seven nine eight zip codes or any seniors from out county as well. Six, those voting for this project are voting for it based on emotions, not logical thinking. Seven, what are the legal ramifications of this action? Did the city of Ypsilanti open itself up to lawsuits if this project is fully agreed to? Some options if they haven't already been addressed. One, if the developer won't save some of the forest, then search for other options. Two, there needs to be payment of taxes to the city. Ypsilanti is not financially stable enough to sustain this arrangement being proposed. Maybe Ann Arbor could subsidize a project such as this. They receive lots of ARPA funds and are much more financially stable. Three, the homeless population in Ypsilanti includes many that are mentally ill and have substance abuse disorders. Many of them hang out because there is no place to go. How about investing in a homeless shelter on the east side of the county? Ann Arbor has a Delana Shelter, which houses the homeless, has programs for them, feeds them, shelters them. This has been very successful, could be a model to use. City of Ypsilanti employees are underpaid and may not even be being paid the county's living wage. High employee turnover rates are plaguing public employees, employers, as well as private sector employers. Next comment are from Lisa Wozniak. Dear Mayor Richardson and members of Ypsilanti Council, I am on work trail and unable to attend the meeting tonight. I ask these questions be read into the public record. I understand that the question regarding whether or not to support the proposed affordable housing development on Clark Road is still but answered, with the exception of whether or not to provide the developer with financial incentive to move ahead. Having gone back through the minutes of various council meetings, I also understand the perilous the economic situation the city of Ypsilanti finds itself in, with some forecasts projecting dire consequences in as little as seven years. Thinking strategically about income and expenditures is one of the city council's most critical and essential responsibilities, taking into consideration the health and safety of our lovely vibrant city and all the people who live here. That said, given the economic forecast, I am flattered that the city council would consider voting in support of payment in lieu of taxes to support the proposed Clark Road development, an action that would work to further compromise the city's bottom line. In doing the math, it is my understanding that the emergency service agreements with the developer is sixty-three thousand less than the revenue that could be collected through relevant millages. The ESA also falls one hundred and sixteen thousand short of overall costs for city services, police and fire for development of its size base upon numbers from previous city budgets. In addition to the CO2 implications, the higher utility rates for residents that will come from the lack of energy efficiency building requirements built into the project, which I would strongly argue is an equity issue, as well as climate and clean energy issue, both of which I ensured were part of my previous comments for the public record. The idea that the city may also provide this out of state, large scale developer with a tax break that will detrimentally impact the city's bottom line is nothing short of fiscal irresponsibility. Thank you for your service to the city of Ypsilanti. I really do hope that you will take the time to understand the fiscal implications of this potential move, and I urge you to vote no in providing the developer with pilot.
Did you read one from Mr. Nolting with the you're here? Mr. Nolting, you'd like to have some comment?
Thanks. Greetings, members of the city council. My name is Bill Nolting. My life and I have been Ypsilanti city homeowners since nineteen ninety-five. I need to go back to the country. As long as Ypsilanti and as long lifelong Democrats and founder of our city's volume and price. We've made comments to you earlier today, so we'll keep trying to read. And thank you for your work to provide affordable housing for Ypsilanti's residents. We support affordable housing, but also support cleaner and clean water. This should never have been seen as a choice between trees and people. People need the many benefits that trees provide. Ypsilanti has a sustainability plan that was approved by city council in twenty twenty-one. Is what the plan has to say about the benefits of urban tree, fix thirty-five. Oh, trees provide a suite of ecosystem services that are nearly incomparable. Cleaner air, cleaner water, sequestered carbon, temperature moderation, stormwater management, urban wildlife habitat, increased property values, increased commercial sales, lower crime rates, faster healing, lower prescription drug burden, lower rates of depression, and improved traffic and performance, end quote. The sustain, but since, sorry, the sustainability plan specifically mentions the Clark Road property. We urge you to follow its recommendation to require an environmental assessment before finalizing the sale of this property by approving the pilot. That's in case thirty-three of the plan. We support affordable housing, but not in a location that will sacrifice some five hundred mature trees, many of them oaks. Councilman Will Coxon estimates that the loss of the carbon capture provided by these trees to be one thousand metric tons per year. The housing complex would contribute another one thousand metric tons. Overall, that's an increase of two thousand metric tons per year to the city's carbon footprint. How can the city ever report recovery of this benefit of the forest? Please work with the developer to explore other locations within the city for this much needed housing. Alternatively, we could require that the developer, that the developer make every effort to save as many mature trees as possible, rather than clear cut all of them, except at the very periphery. May I do campaign successively with slogans such as climate, climate resiliency, fight the clean air theme work? Here's a chance to say true to all your principles. We urge you to vote no on pilot. For the minimum delay approval until one environmental impact assessment has been done, including an assessment of relocating the project elsewhere that would not involve destruction, one of the last old growth oak forests in the city. Thank you for all your work on these typical issues.
Thank you, Mr. Nolting.
Sheriff Farmer, two fourteen North Huron Street, thank you. I stand accused of being a tree hugger, and I plead guilty. I stand accused of opposing, opposing affordable housing, and I plead not guilty. The city of Ypsilanti provides most of the affordable housing in Washtenaw County. Of course we do. We're a friendly, caring, welcoming community. I helped add affordable housing to our community when I was mayor. However, it's not our job to be the only community building affordable housing. It's time for the rest of the county to step up. As much as all of us who live here love Ypsilanti, we must not be so self-absorbed as to think that every person who needs affordable housing wants to live here. No, actually, there are people who were raised or worked in Ann Arbor, Dexter, Celine, Chelsea, et cetera, who would prefer to be able to find affordable housing in or near to those cities. So Washtenaw County has a countywide need for affordable housing, and our county commission, hopefully soon to be led are our, by our own Annie Somerville, needs to help these other communities understand, embrace, and take action on that truth. Ypsilanti is in an ongoing budget crisis. Our excellent city manager Frances McMullin brought a consultant to the May budget meeting who drove home that point. The city struggles to meet the needs of current residents for basic services. It takes money to run fair elections, fill potholes, sweep city streets, paper garbage pickup, and to offer competitive salaries so that vacancies in our firefighter and police officer ranks can be filled and otherwise keep the lights on. We barely have enough money to meet these basic needs for the current residents. If any additional affordable housing is to be built in Ypsilanti, it needs to be built by a developer who believes in affordable housing, not by a developer whose primary concern is avoiding federal taxes itself by denying needed revenue to our community by demands for a payment in lieu of taxes with or without an emergency service agreement. So in summary, one, people need affordable housing. Two, communities throughout Washtenaw County need to step up to provide affordable housing. Three, Ypsilanti is already doing more than our fair share to provide affordable housing. Four, Ypsilanti has trouble retaining staff and maintaining streets and buildings now because of a shrinking budget due to a structural deficit. Five, each time and Ypsilanti City Council agrees to a payment in lieu of taxes or pilot, they're giving away needed property tax because a pilot payment only represents a fraction of the taxable value of the new construction. This money is forfeited year after year over many years, and due to our dire and worsening budget crisis, Ypsilanti cannot afford to reach one more pilot, however worthy the cause. So for example, Ypsilanti currently carries four pilots. And as an example of the cost of pilots to the city, consider this. A fifth pilot, which expired in twenty eighteen, paid nine thousand dollars a year for fifteen years. Now that it has ended, the property is assessed at. We continue. Thank you.
Thank you. You're back to Sheriff Farmer. Monica Ross Williams. I got seven, I got like seven people here today, but I would like to have more also put inside the record, please. Thank you very much.
I know I will not have read this to speak, uh, to complete this. So I wanted to make sure each city council person had a copy of what was written. It is also public on Facebook at this time. Last time I was here, if you, if you feel more comfortable filling your vast down to speak.
Oh, thank you. The last time I spoke before this council, it was actually to make right the wrong that happened in Hamilton Crossing in regards to the co-op that was originally existing for the people who lived and moved at the Hamilton Crossing back in the nineteen seventies, where it is that their co-opship was to help them buy houses. I say that today because that's how long my history goes here in Ypsilanti. I was born in the city. Also, I knew Mattie Dorsey quite long. She was my mother's second lover. The purpose of my attendance at this meeting today is to express my aims at what city, city of Ypsilanti Councilwoman Annie Somerville stated twice on the social media resource of Meta Facebook in the approximate timeframe of December twenty twenty-one to March of twenty twenty-two. To begin, it would be best to cite a written passage by authors, Tom Kaiman, Etso, and Ford, reclaiming critical analysis, "The Social Harms of Bitch," volume three, number one, Spring two thousand nine, which is a sociological analysis from the abstract. The increasing use of bitch among women makes it harder to see the links between the word and a patriarchy. In pop culture and in everyday life, men and women use bitch as an epithet against women and non-conventional man, as well as a mean for expressing dominance over a person or objects. Women who reclaim the term by declaring themselves bitches, calling other women bitches in a friendly way, or using the term as a female-based generic unwillingly reinforce sexism, unlike the term feminist, which is tied to a movement of social change. Being bitch refers to women only with a false power, challenging either man or the patriarchy. Equally, on page fifty of this sociological analysis, bitch cannot be analyzed sociology then without understanding this place in the English language, in which adult women are empathized through the use of girls and are raised through male-based genetics. A bitch cannot be understood apart from this piece of society in which girls and women of all ages are members of a sex class that is subordinate to man. We recognize that many men are members of the sore subordinate categories, being of color, poor, queer, or having disabilities, but they are not subordinate as men. And I will yield my time. The only thing that I will say and yield in my time is that, and I do want to say this, in closing, to call honorable city councilwoman, my personal hero, Mattie Dorsey, any form of a bitch, or as defined by Mary the Rappe Fexer dictionary, a female dog, is a complete abomination, insult, and disgrace to her history, legacy, aura, and leadership without eastern Washtenaw County, her, the community, and Washtenaw County in general, as well. It is inherently racist and so in nature coming from councilwoman Somerville.
We're tired of stuff.
And I will, I will yield my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mike Cost.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And it's Mike Coster of Brighton, Michigan. And I realize that's not Ypsilanti, but I'm here today because I worked as the, as the lead ecologist and a senior conservation scientist for fifteen years for Michigan State University's Michigan Natural Features Inventory, which I conducted ecological assessments across the state to evaluate land for purchase for conservation purposes and conservation actions, management for biodiversity. So I looked at aerial photos for the region. I can see this forest that is proposed for components on Clark Street, and this is the largest block of contiguous forest that remains in this area. So in the surrounding area, this is the largest block that's not yet protected in, in this region, in the Ypsilanti area. This forest is adjacent to the Huron River, which is a major wildlife border. That is significant because this is where animals migrate through. It's also adjacent to Peninsula contiguous with Peninsula Park. So you already have a block of land, very small forest. This would greatly increase that. So its highest and best purpose seems to be to maintain as forest. There are many places that could be developed for housing. I am supportive of housing of all kinds of affordable. What, we all need places to live, everybody does, and that's a good thing, but I don't see it as a, this is a false choice between a beautiful intact forest that serves the people here to provide clean air, release, release stress, uh, clean air and reduce climate change. In other words, the trees are taking in carbon, are taking in carbon dioxide, releasing oxygen, providing us with clean air. It's dominated by large diameter, by very large oak trees, white oak, red oak, um, I should, uh, I know, red oak and chinkapin oak. So it's a, it's a forest and bar oak as well. And those oak trees support the, support the bird species. They support over four hundred and fifty different caterpillar species. And just for a songbird to feed its young, to raise the nestlings, there were six thousand, six thousand to nine thousand caterpillars in the springtime to feed the nestlings. Where did they get those caterpillars? Primarily from the oak trees. Those are the trees that generate the most caterpillars that feed, feed our birds. So, and they need those to raise their young. So this is not just some idle forest. This is the largest block of contiguous forest, and it's, there, you really need to look at, are there other places where this, this development could happen? Because once you, once that forest is cut down, it's gone, it can't be replaced. Today's climate doesn't allow us to plant an oak forest and expect it to be an oak forest in the future. It just doesn't work that way because the prevalence of a basic species is impossible, it's an impossible task to do. So it's an irreplaceable forest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Would anyone in the audience like to speak? Mr. Lynn.
Thank you, Your Honor, and City Council. Not surprisingly, for the seventh time, I'd like to address you and say, please, don't do this. Economically, it makes no sense. I was on the Community Benefits Committee and expressed my concern at the time. They had a five percent deal going in, and they cut it to three. And in my opinion, that's the wrong direction. Financially, it makes no sense. And then you've got the, as we've heard many speakers before us, talk about the forest and what happens. Here again, I pledge to you that I will work with Mr. Anzini, the owner, who expressed concern that there were people who would back the purchase of this property and commit it to long-term forest. And I'm here to say, my wife and I will do the same if this development doesn't happen here. And Mr. Anzini has expressed that he is the owner of the property, that he too would be interested in that movement. So I don't think it's going to happen, that it would be just another developer to clear cut this. That would happen. Taxes, as you know, the city is higher mileage than Ann Arbor, some of the highest in the entire state. And yet, we find ourselves financially, I don't, you'll get another mileage passed, where's the money going to come from? We already are supporting low-income housing and this development, if it could go, I know it can't go on Water Street. And unfortunately, that's a little story on your neck, and unfortunately, you can have a part in that. We thought it was great, but it wasn't. At least here tonight, people are telling you, this financially to the city is not a good idea. And I think it can be repeated many times. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cost. Yes.
I'm Amanda Smith. I live in the world two. You've heard me a number of times. I will say again that affordable housing is climate justice. You're talking about climate, affordable housing is climate justice. The people who are most likely to be harmed by climate change are the people who are going to need affordable housing. We need to help people now. I've told you this many times, and I will say it again, that twenty-six percent of the kids in Ypsilanti community schools are experiencing homelessness. Those kids could all have a place to live. And that's incredibly important. Housing is in crisis across the entire nation, and especially in the city of Ypsilanti. And we need to address that now. And it's, it is wild to me to think that the voices of some wealthy neighbors who are worried about their property values are going to have any weight to this table when the conversation is about the people of Ypsilanti. Keeping people who want to live here, here, giving people places to sleep, a roof over their head, privileges that each and every person at this council table, as I understand, already has. So please take that into consideration when you're thinking about your votes tonight about the Clark Road project. I'm very excited to see what's going to happen with that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. My name is Tajri Hodge, and I would first like to congratulate councilmembers Annie Somerville and Nicole Brown on their recent primary elections, and thank Mayor Lois Richardson for her many years of service and continued leadership in the community of Ypsilanti and the greater area. Recently, there has been some backlash against councilmember Somerville for a post she made on social media about half a year ago regarding historical women of Ypsilanti, as she learned about them through her volunteer work at the Ypsilanti Historical Museum. As she stated, her intent with this project started to get young people, particularly women around her age, not children, millennials, interested in local women's history by taking a modern hip hop feminist approach. She shared information about Asel Downey and Mattie Dorsey and their contributions to the community we live in today. She called this series "The Historical Babys of Ypsilanti." They say that in order to educate the masses, you have to speak to the masses, speak to them in a way that they will understand. That is what councilmember Somerville did. She made history interesting. She's making it cool, she's making it approachable. And to be perfectly honest, I didn't know who Asel Downey was. I didn't know who Mattie Dorsey was before this post came across my feet. I was able to find out more about the first ever elected black councilwoman in Ypsilanti. I learned about her fight against urban renewal, which was little more than manifest destiny. I learned that there was no quit in her, and that is baby energy. Mattie Dorsey was a baby in the best possible way, and I and so many of us can only aspire to be like her in her relentless fight for justice. I would not have learned about Ms. Dorsey if it were not for councilmember Somerville, so I commend her for taking a different approach. And even though there was some controversy, overall, she reached hundreds of people with her historical posts. That's hundreds of people who would otherwise not be talking about Ms. Dorsey right now. Councilmember Somerville is literally keeping her legacy alive by sharing her story. I know that councilmember Somerville will uphold many of the same values that Ms. Dorsey did. Overall, the people of Ypsilanti feel the same way, which is why she was overwhelmingly elected to continue serving the city of Ypsilanti and the Washington Board of Commissioners. As a minority woman, councilmember Somerville's addition will make the county board a majority woman, majority minority, and a majority millennial board. And I thank her for her service and the baby energy that she brings each and everything.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cost. There any other, anyone else? Yes, Ms. Lynn.
Sally Ross, I've spoken with you numerous times before, and I did forward to you a list of questions that I was concerned about in terms of the car park projects. And I hope you've had a chance to read them, and I thank you for attention to them. I, those of us who are concerned about this project have been labeled conservatives. I see myself only as a conservative in terms of being fiscally responsible. I support a housing, I support affordable housing. But just in my own case, as well as the city, I don't believe in spending money without having all the data.
But just in my own case, as well as the city, I don't believe in spending money without having all the data about what the costs are and the long-term effects. I think that's the only way to be responsible. And I don't believe that it's accurate to say that the costs are limited to, the cost to the city are limited to sixty thousand dollars per year. We don't know what those costs are at this point. And we do not even know about the length of the pilot. Because what's in tonight's materials just talks about a pilot. It doesn't talk about how many years. And I checked with our city attorney and said it's related to the mortgage that gets instituted. So if this was approved tonight, it would be an open, open-ended thing because we don't even know what the time period is. So I have these questions that I listed in a number of areas, including fiscal areas. And I would hope that you would obtain the answers to these questions and share them with all of us taxpayers. Because it's, we are the ones who will be affected and that we are the ones who are terribly concerned about this. We've paid high taxes ourselves to the city for a number of years. We don't want to see more. We don't want to see bad things happen to Ypsilanti. And if the city takes on all these additional costs and there's not additional revenue, then it can lead to bankruptcy and emergency manager, tax increases, higher mileage, and making a place not a good place to live. So I know you are charged with determining what's best for the city. And I believe that considering, that approving this tonight would not be best for the city. And much more data is needed before you can make a responsible decision. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. For anyone else that would like to just come? Yes.
I'm more one. I want to take this opportunity to congratulate Annie Somerville and Nicole Brown on the primary election win that you guys had. We look forward to doing this again in November. And thank you guys so much for your hard work making this happen this far. As it relates to the presentation or what Monica said this evening, I'm just going back because being on social media, I try to be as often as I can. And just being a seasoned woman, I was not affected by, you know, as Monica was. She talked about the timeframe of December twenty-one, twenty-one to March twenty-two. That's about three months. During that time, people had an opportunity to speak, to voice their concerns. I did not hear a lot of noise. There may have been. But what I'm going to say is, is that from December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one to March twenty-twenty-two, just recently in August, five months later, Annie won by seventy-four percent. So my take on this is, if our community was so affected inevitably by Annie's comments, I personally feel that it would have been reflected in the people's voice. And it was. The people's voice said that Annie is quite capable, has the level of integrity to sit on our commissioners board. And as a seasoned woman, I don't see that as the dimension. I'm excited about what's happening with millennials. We may not always understand the way that they communicate because we're not of that time. But I also know that from dealing with Annie as long as I have, and she even being called my daughter's friend, I believe that her heart was pure. And what she said was not to demean Maddie Dorsey or any other seasoned woman that came through Ypsilanti and did wonderful stuff. So thank you both. You did a great job so far.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lynn. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Do you have any more?
Okay. I don't know your name, but please come.
Hello, everyone. My name is Chris White. The owner of two-two-seven North Grove, Gilbert Mansion. And I addressed the council today in regards to the Point and Point North Park development project. I know I'm kind of late in game here, but one of the issues I can serve you is that I never received any kind of notice or any kind of, anything that this development was going to be, you know, set forth. I just learned of it, your neighbors. And they never received any kind of notice either, that this development was being discussed. I don't know, is it, it's an obligation of the, or to send out a notice that some, a big development like this is going to be proposed next to your property? One of my question. And was there, was there a zoning change for this proposed development? If there was a zoning change, I believe it, it was a responsibility of the members to the city to put out a notice. But I sent out an email a couple of weeks ago, and I was wondering if all the members received that email with my concerns. I got a response from the mayor about it. I didn't get any responses from the city council. If everybody, can I ask a question? Did everybody receive my email? Chris White, Casper Construction.
Normally, this is about back and forth time.
Okay. My first time speaking in front of councils. Okay, I appreciate that. A little bit sorry in here. Bear with me. So I just, you know, for my concerns about that piece of property moving forward. And so it was all listed in the letter, and I don't have the letter to read it today from the front. Biggest concern that I never received notice of it. It sounds like it's being pushed forward to do the zoning changes or something. I guess I'll have to investigate if that was required by council. I've been a business partner at Ypsilanti. I call it partnership because we own property. We pay taxes for over forty years in the city of Ypsilanti. We own, I own property prior to Gilbert Mansion on Pearl Street that we renovated and developed. Some will run down, you know, places just like the Gilbert Mansion. We took that and we restored it into a beautiful home, a beautiful piece of property. And it's, you know, been that since for thirty-some years. So, I mean, I'm one hundred percent opposed to this development next to, right next door to my piece of property. I just wanted city council to understand that. Make sure they read that letter that was sent. If, I can resend it or the mayor can send it to you. They have. I guess that's a biggest concern. Right now, I don't understand.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you.
For anyone else, Mr. Tewson, I thought you.
First, I want to congratulate my daughter Nicole and my brother's daughter, Annie Somerville, for a successful move a few days ago. And thank you, Mayor Richardson, for your work on counseling for the city. To the city manager, to the mayor, and to the council. I'm here tonight advocating for the safety of my community and the safety of the residents in my community. Now, the safety depends on the police that we hire to protect and serve us. And if we don't have police protecting and serving us, our city, my city, it goes into chaos. We are on the verge of losing five police officers. And council, mayor, and city manager, if we lose five police officers, then the safety of our community is on yours hand. The morale in the police department is lower than it was with Zepinski and Bazar. I was here when Zepinski was here and Bazar was here. That morale was low, but the morale now is lower to the point that police officers that want to do police work wants to leave. Because administration plays games with them. And administration, what he does, he protects his officer Thompson. Never give him reprimands for any of the things that he have done. His record is impeccable. But now he wants to promote him to a lieutenant's position. That's not safe for our community. We have CSCs that has not been done proper under him. The women have been made look as if they caused their problem. Now, when the chief first came here, we sat down, NAACP. We sat down, we talked with him, and he agreed on the things that we talked about. And, and I just got to get this in, brother. And on the onset, he was a good chief, but somewhere he slipped. He got too comfortable. And I think his constant, by him being so comfortable now, he's not concerned about our city no more. So my suggestion is for him to leave and go someplace else where he can be satisfied or he can better serve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tewson. Is there anyone else that would like to get? Mr. Tewson, again.
Hello, my name is Owen Tewson, aka Mr. Tewson number two. I'd like to give a big congratulations to my sister Nicole Brown for the primary election win. A big congratulations to Annie Somerville for the primary election win. And I thank you to Ms. Lois Richardson, the current. Thank you for all your work. Thank all of y'all for doing all the work that y'all do. Let's keep it going and get ready for November.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tewson, too. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, Ms. Lynn.
I'm Yvonne Apple. I live at two-zero-two-eight College Wood. Lived there since nineteen eighty-seven and a very proud resident of Ypsilanti. I had been following with COVID and also, once we finished that big project on Washington, the Walgreens and the President's House, I kind of got removed from city affairs. Before that, there was a large presence of the College Heights University of State's residents at these meetings because there was a lot at stake. So over time, I, with my current stuff too, I haven't followed as closely city council as I probably should have. What alarms me the most, I think, is the financial situation that the city has now found them, finds themselves in. It had been in bad shape at one point. It was able to be, get corrected. But now with some of these proposals that have been approved or coming up for consideration for approval, I don't understand and see where the fiscal plan is to pay for these. It's wonderful to have these lofty goals, but how are you, how is one going to pay for it? And also, I have concerns regarding the tone of some of the language that has been occurring in the city and at city council meetings. Listening to some of these on tape should never, ever be allowed. And frankly, I think it's not, there's discrimination, but it goes across the board. Ageism, racial, gender, those are all forms of discrimination that I've been hearing on some of these tapes. And so I implore you to please think about, and not think about, work together so that some of these issues can be solved because we get, got big problems ahead with this financial situation that the city is facing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lynn. Is there anyone else that would like to just come? Being, sorry, so are you in the back row there? Were you wanting to just come? Yeah. Okay, thank you. I stopped moving that year. Okay. See, no other hands?
Mayor, there are several people online that wish to make comment.
Thank you.
The first individual with their hand raised, attending virtually, is Mark Perry. Allow them to speak now.
Mayor Richardson, City Council. My name is Mark Perry. I'm with Social Media PR Solutions, DBA Advantage Communications, and our client is DTE Energy. And DT has a program that's called Bright Ideas for Neighborhoods that was established to shine the light on small micro businesses because of the impact they have on our neighborhoods or potentially can have. And want to give them the opportunity to get better and grow. The program has been in existence for six years and is now being extended to the community of Ypsilanti. And I wanted to make you aware of it, that it's going to take place on August the twenty-fifth in Detroit at Greater Grace Temple, which is one of the churches that's nationally recognized, is actually where Rosa Parks' home going works. But this program, the deadline for applicants to get their applications in is August the fifteenth. And you go to dtepitch eventbrite.com. That's dtepitch eventbrite.com. And we're looking to be able to provide some cash awards to nine participants. And we know that there's some great upcoming businesses in Ypsilanti that would greatly benefit by this program. We also provide some training for them. The competition is a two-minute pitch competition of pitching their business. And we have a coach, a professional coach out of Dallas that's going to give them some training on that. And we have some other surprises for them as well. I want to thank you for this time and look forward to having some participation from some Ypsilanti businesses. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tewson. Glad to join this meeting.
Counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Beth Gibbons. Allow them to speak now.
Hi, this is Beth Gibbons. I live at one-eight-three Mansfield Street. I was calling in tonight because I wanted to share with the council a resolution that was passed last night by the Sustainability Commission. Some of you may have already seen this, but in case you have not, I'm just going to read this resolution aloud. Whereas, a goal of the Sustainability Commission is to uphold the three principles of sustainability, equity, environment, and economy. And the twenty-twenty-one approved sustainability plan includes a goal of complete neighborhoods and a priority to be given to the development of affordable housing. And whereas, the sustainability plan identifies that the process for securing affordable housing is long and involves many parties. And the city's Community Benefits Agreement, CBA, process offers an exceptional model for engaging many parties in building community. And whereas, secure housing is a fundamental right of all people and access to secure, safe housing is a stepping stone to economic security. And whereas, the city of Ypsilanti and the surrounding Washington County are in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. And whereas, the current CBA for nine-four-five Clark Road includes provisions for increasing access to Peninsula Park for future residents. And whereas, high-density development connected transportation benefits the environment through discouraging sprawl and reducing vehicle miles traveled. And whereas, the current CBA for nine-four-five Clark Road includes a resident council and a space for free store food pantry, which will add to the neighborhood resilience. and a space for free store food pantry, which will add to the neighborhood resilience. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Sustainability Commission recommends to city council that the council unanimously approve and support the 945 Clark Road Community Benefits Agreement and provide the required payment in lieu of taxes required for the development to be affordable and accessible to current and future city of Ypsilanti residents. This resolution was passed by a vote of four yeses, two nays, and three. And there were three members of the commission absent. I wanted to share this for the record, for those of you who may not have had an opportunity to hear this resolution's passage from last night's meeting. Thank you very much. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Tousen. Thank you for your work on the Sustainability Commission.
Counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Jesse Miller. Allow them to speak now.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Jesse Miller. I am resident of Ward Two. And I also serve on the Board of Directors as your representative to the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority Board of Directors. I wanted to take a quick moment to thank you all for your support. I think every single person up there, to some degree or another, had expressed their, you know, personal support for the proposal. It passed overall with 61% of the vote and passed with 75% of the vote in Ypsilanti, winning every single precinct. So I'm very much looking forward to initiating the, putting that all into, into action. For myself, I'm here to lend my support to the, the housing development on Clark Road. I very much hear, you know, the, the ecological concerns that people have with that area. But the fact of the matter is, has been stated that housing is, we are in a housing crisis and there is a demand. And if we don't, if housing's not built within the city, it's going to be built somewhere else and other land is going to be destroyed. And that is, it becomes literally the "not in my backyard" argument to push development out of our city, just out into the areas that are already undisturbed. And I want to keep this housing denser in the city because it's easier to provide services. It's more economical and it strengthens our city by bringing more people in. You know, as has was stated many times throughout the course of the campaign, you know, Ypsilanti's greatest resource is its people and we can use more of that. So I want to keep more people in Ypsilanti and I'm looking forward to seeing this development move forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller.
Counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Tyrone Bridges. Allow them to speak now.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is Tyrone Bridges. I'm the producer of I Thought You Do. I would like to congratulate the new mayor, Nicole Brown, and also our county commissioner, Annie Somerville. Mayor Lois Richardson, thank you very much for your service. And I appreciate everything that we've talked about. And I hold that close to my heart. City ma, city manager, Francis McMillan, thank you. Thank you so much for what you have done for the city as well. And I echo the sentiments of Brother Lee Tousen about our chief of police. Y'all need to look into that. As far as the morale, I have receipts. I have receipts. I have receipts that will blow your mind. The morale, it speaks for itself when police officers cry out for help. And the chief act as if he doesn't know what's going on. Annie, I'd like for you to raise your hand because I can't see you. I'm here looking on Facebook, if you don't mind. I, I can't see, alrighty. Don't let any words of discouragement come from anybody to what you were saying. We all know what you mean. And we also know that email that was sent May 9th to address this, this, this information that came across to our show. And it was not replied to by nobody but you. Thank you. City of Ypsilanti, y'all got some great things to look forward to. City Attorney John Barr, thank you for your service as well. And may God bless the city of Ypsilanti.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Sharon Glenn. Allow them to speak now. Sharon Glenn, you have three minutes to address counsel. You'll have to unmute yourself. We can't hear you. If counsel would like, we could come back to Sharon Glenn and move on to the next. The next individual with their hand raised is Peter Church. Allow them to speak now.
Hello, I'd like to read from Alfred A. Young Jr.'s book about the working poor in Ypsilanti. Just a short paragraph here. Anybody can get out. All it takes is a job, you know? Well, not any job. You can't have a job, but some job is better than no job. But what it takes is, we got to get our childcare issues together. We got to be able to get a job that's going to, even starting here, you know, a job that's going to get you a little extra money so you can start saving. Then we got to get us a car. Then we're going to look for a better job. Maybe something that we can save for one or two classes. The aspirations of the working poor in Ypsilanti are clear. They're not happy being poor. They're not happy being trapped. They're not happy with the lack of opportunity for good jobs and education. We're not serving them well. We're not serving them well by bringing more of them into this soul-crushing environment. $24 million pays for a lot of two-year degrees. $24 million plays for, pays for a lot of childcare so people can get better jobs and go to school. $24 million should not be going to, to two of the richest billionaires in the United States. I strongly disagree with building and adding more affordable housing at this time. We have working poor that need our help. And it's time that we started looking at that. Too often, the council, the various commissions, have looked at throwing out the life preserver. It makes them feel so good and it looks so good in public. But you can't throw out the life preserver and then sell off the boat. I hope that we also take into account what's going on with the police department, the inability to fund additional officers and provide the safety that these people need so that they can be secure in their homes and secure with their families is something that has to be considered. In the overall scheme of things, this particular affordable housing proposal should be passed on. There'll be more in the future and hopefully they won't be from robber barons who are demanding $24 million from these poor working people. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Trishae Duckworth. Allow them to speak now.
Good evening, counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. I want to give a congratulations to those races, specifically for mayor and our new candidate for county commission. So congratulations to you both. Thank you to Mayor Richardson for your many, many years of service. And as Tyrone Bridges just said, to everyone, to everyone that's working to build the city of Ypsilanti, I want to say to you, Annie, I support you. I've seen the attacks that have come up against you as you ran this race. I thank you for your ability to not, not respond. I'm working on that myself, right? But your, for your ability to not respond to some of those things that I'm sure it was very hard not to respond to. I want to say to those that would try to discourage or speak down on Annie for the things that were put out on the internet, I'm not understanding, you know, millennials and how millennials talk and things and, and the things that they do and say, right? Because I'm not a millennial, I'm 47. I know y'all probably know that. However, you know, Annie, once that was made aware that it was of offense to folks, Annie took that down, was very apologetic. And I just think it's absolutely disgusting, to be honest, that this is before us right now, especially when it was of no ill intent. And I'm sure of that. So Annie, you definitely have my support. You all have my support because at the end of the day, we have to learn how to love. Mayor Richardson always says, "Love is the answer." It is. We got to learn how to support one another. We got to learn how to be there for one another. But sometimes we got to learn how to stand up, speak up, and fight, fight for one another, too, because that's equally as important. Also, I want to say about the, the housing initiative that is coming. I'm excited to hear about that. I know many people be like, "Oh, she not from here." Well, let me tell you why I had to move out of Washington County. It was because I was pushed out. It was because I was pushed out because I'm disabled and my housing voucher would not fit at any of these apartment complexes here in this area, right? Was that my fault that I can't be a Washington County resident? No. But that's not just me. That is the state of many people who are suffering, right? Those that are disabled, our seniors, those that are low income, right? And we have to start speaking to the least of these. We have to start doing what is right because at the end of the day, we see a lot of crime and that's because we don't understand the correlation to poverty and crime. If we begin to attack poverty and make things more affordable for housing and healthcare and so many other things, we will start to see the tide turn. We will start to see changes in this city like never before. So I'm excited about all the changes that are coming. And I'm hoping that everybody will put their hand to the plow. No, I am not a resident of Ypsilanti, but I stand Ypsilanti and Washington County strong because we all should be. We are our neighbors. We are all one and we got to fight this good fight together. God bless you all and have a wonderful, wonderful night.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tousen.
Counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Gail Summerhill. Allow them to speak now. It appears that Gail Summerhill has lowered their hand. Go back to Sharon Glenn. Sharon Glenn, you have three minutes to address counsel. You need to unmute yourself.
Ms. Glenn, are you having difficulties? There's somewhere you can let us know. Are we getting closed captions from her?
No, we wouldn't get closed captions unless she unmutes. Well, Gail Summerhill does have her hand back raised, so we'll go back to her. Gail Summerhill, you now have the floor. You have three minutes to address counsel.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Previously, the screen did not come up to show unmute. So I'm sure Sharon is having the same issue because it just wasn't there for us to see where we were supposed to unmute. So if you want to go to Sharon first and, or just see, we'll see if she can see it or not. But I'll, I'll go ahead and start my three minutes. First of all, I want to, I want to thank the city of Ypsilanti because you are incredible with online and in person. This other, other municipalities that cover Ypsilanti are making excuses why they can't have open meetings. So I want to commend you all for being the least, having the least amount of money but to be able to offer this service. I want to also bring to attention, I'm calling also Gail Summerhill on behalf of Ypsie Can I Share. I'm listening to the questions and concerns that are coming to the city council. Ypsie Can I Share is a tool where it, knowledge is power and we give you every single thing. Every single elected official, who are they? How to get in contact with them? You have to learn how to follow the money and know for city of Ypsilanti, how much comes down from the county commissioners? How much comes down from the state? You need to do your homework because it's very simple. Our election has a talking ballot so that people are informed that have never been informed in the past to put a picture with a name so that you may be informed as minorities and economically disadvantaged people because there's never been education. So I thank you. All of the attacks that are little attacks here, go back to read your own knowledge. There was nothing that Annie did maliciously. If you want to know what maliciously is, you need to follow the federal government and watch their meetings, watch the state, and just follow what comes down to Ypsilanti. We have nothing in Ypsilanti. If you want to fight for more for Ypsilanti, then I suggest each and every one of you attend the county commissioner.
Me, your timer did ring. Thank you very much for your comment and come back again.
Hey, counsel, we will return to Sharon Glenn. Sharon Glenn, you will have three minutes to address counsel. You'll have to press the microphone icon to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes, I'm sharing Glenn and I'm just awed by this meeting this evening. To mayor and city council members, good evening. And for those that don't know me, I have worked in Ypsilanti, born in Ypsilanti for many years, working with young people. And still, I get to see them occasionally and work with them. I was very moved by some of the comments made this evening about Maddie Dorstey. She was my Aunt Pitt. And she basically trained me to be a community activist. It was moving to me that someone took the time to read up on her, learn about her. And there's a number of people that have gone on that we stand on their shoulders. And so as I re-entered the community, I would hope that we get a group of young adults to work with our young people and educating them in their history. Ypsilanti has a beautiful history of activists, people that accomplish something. And I'm hoping that we can continue to do that. Also, I heard that there was a derogatory comment made about her. And unfortunately, having worked with young people, you get to know all kinds of terminology. I don't always like it. I don't always accept. But what you have to do is sit down with our young people and understand what they're saying, particularly when our artists use those phrases. Young people feel that they also can use them. And so we have And so we have to. Be very careful how we speak to our youth. And not put them down. Because once we put them down, it's hard to get back again. So let's learn to listen and understand what they're saying. I think I didn't come to make some long great speech, but I was just awed by what was going on this evening. And I appreciate technology and God bless you. Bye bye.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn. I appreciate your comment.
Counsel, that's the last hand raised under the attendees list.
Thank you. Seeing no hands here in the chamber and none online, we will close the. The public comment time. Thank you. I would like to say thanks to everyone for that, Ms. President and that is online. Thank you very much for attending and maybe giving us your comments and your thoughts. We appreciate you. All right, moving on with the agenda. Did counsel, I'm sorry, before I move on, did counsel have any remarks that they would like to make regarding any comments that were made during? Yes, Mr. Will Paxton.
Just wanted to quickly answer for my. Like question. Um, to the residents around there and that typically I've done. Um, and in terms of, uh, was there a zoning change? Not now. There's not. There was no question reasoning. It was already zoned for that density. Also that type of awesome. Yeah.
I would ask Mr. Myers, were notices were sent out? I think we started two twenty part some time ago, but were notices sent out?
Around these seven notices set the property owners and the residents of that. So individual notice, so last year address. That goes through different addresses.
They do go to different addresses. I don't, I don't live there, so.
There's plenty of people. Were the tax bill that said property owners of the residents helped. But notice and ample neighborhood participation happened throughout that entire.
Sure. Can I respond to that?
Well, there's really no back and forth. I was just trying to get him to answer your question, so. All right, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I, because I know we do send notices for those. Hey, anything else from any councilman? All right, uh, let's move on to presentations, please. And at this time, we have a presentation from Government Consulting Services, Inc. and Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mayor Richardson, members of council and city manager McMillan. Thank you for allowing me to talk to get a couple of minutes to address this body this evening. I was just thinking on the way here that, excuse me, it's been, I think, ten years since the last time I spoke before council and you know, to you students. So it's good to be back before everyone. So, uh, as most of you should know that, uh, this year, our contract is up renewed. And so if this body does choose to renew our contract, which I'm hoping it does, uh, for variety of reasons. Um, I just wanted to walk you through some of the changes that I plan on implementing as one of your lobbyists from GCSI. Um, so first up, increased reporting to this body. Uh, we can figure out, you know, what makes sense and, uh, what the preference is for the mayor and city council and city manager. But typically for, uh, other clients, what's done is semi-monthly reports. Um, I know, for instance, uh, Detroit Public Schools, we have a semi-monthly report, a couple of other clients as well. That, uh, it could be something, uh, different as monthly or quarterly as well as whatever meets the needs of this body. Uh, the next thing is increased staff contact. I know like how we, uh, Kirk Prophet, uh, routinely meets with staff in some capacity. What I want to do is continue that or also, uh, increase it to the best of my ability. So whether that means, you know, checking in with senior staff, whether it's once a week or bi-weekly, whatever, uh, is appropriate. I want to make sure that staff, uh, has my contact and is able to reach me if they have any questions. Especially regarding, uh, issues affecting the city in Lansing. Occasionally, uh, attending city council meetings, I think the best way to get a better sense of, you know, how this body deliberates and works together in the issues facing. Uh, this community is by routinely attending city council meetings. I'm sure you don't want to see me, uh, like a tech collector every council meeting. But, uh, one of the things I want to do is attend them more and have some face time with all of you just to know what's going on. Next with that is checking in as regular as possible with the mayor, council, the city manager. Again, I don't want to annoy any of you or, you know, be a pest, but I just want to, uh, make it very clear that I am accessible. Not only myself, but also other team members of actually CSI if you ever need anything. Um, so making myself as accessible as possible to everyone, um. That's involved with, uh, the city of Ypsilanti. And some of you may or may not know, even though I no longer reside in Ypsilanti, uh, I live in Detroit. Now I'm still here probably twice, three times a week, uh, either for, uh, professional reasons or personal reasons that still have connections here. Uh, strengthening ties to other local municipalities. So seeing what are some of the issues that are more common, you would think that faces the entire county. Um, that we can collaborate with other entities like the city of Ann Arbor or the township. Um, and things of that nature to sort of build up a coalition to better, uh, base these issues together as a county. Uh, I know in years past, uh, we forget things like the boom, the boom. Um, and affordable housing, you know, that effort has been met on the subcases. But just want to make sure that everyone across the county sort of has a clear understanding of what everyone's issues is. And, and collaborating on the issues that are common. Uh, and then last but not least, bringing, uh, some Ypsy awareness to Lansing, quite frankly. Uh, I think it's important to have what's called Days in Lansing. I don't know if this body actually has done this in the past, but bringing members who are available to come to Lansing and April legislators, not only from the Washtenaw State delegation. Uh, from across the state of Michigan as well. Um, and I have not talked to, um, Rep. Pearson's successor, Jim Wilson Jr. about this. So I'm sorry if he's hearing this for the first time, but also, uh, working with him once he's elected. To ensure that legislators come to Ypsy as well, um, to take some tours around these businesses, um, in our communities, uh, to really give them. Um, a firsthand experience of what it means to be a resident in the city of Ypsy, so.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Miller? Just a comment. Uh, Mr. Jones Chan.
Yeah, we spoke about this a little bit, but I think financially I would like to know. How will be able to gauge going forward, whether, you know, we're getting the juice we need for our squeeze, you know, are we. Getting out what we're putting in. I think the, the cost will definitely affect with the current. Uh, renewal. So, um, how will that change going forward?
Yeah, uh, and I come from a background, very brief as a consultant, so I know exactly those metrics you're talking about. Um, in terms of counting sort of the minutes, the hours of, you know, how much time it takes to go into a certain project for the city or for a client period. Uh, now in the lobbying world, that's not something we do. Um, it's not calculated on that basis, say, as, you know, maybe Mr. Barr's, um, time is or someone like that. Um, but with that being said, still, uh, getting to the, the, the point of that is hopefully by, uh, doing much more reporting. So you can see on a weekly and even sometimes daily basis of, okay, here's the breakdown of who I talked to about this certain issue. Uh, it's so much time it took.
Yeah, I think for me anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm less concerned about the labor. I'm more concerned of, uh. Sort of the, the dollar value of the lobbying efforts. So, um, you know, will we see additional funding, you know? Well, I guess what I would like to see is, you know, we worked on this, we got X accomplished. Um, because really the communication, at least for me, that I get from DCSI. Sort of like a newsletter. I mean, it's, it's pretty much spam at this point. Um, so I think a link to the lobbying efforts and then outcomes would be beneficial. Um, and then we can kind of, you know, together determine what we think the dollar value of those, you know, lobbying outcomes might be. Um, you know, would we be getting that sort of feedback or reporting?
Yeah, that's, that's definitely possible. I'm taking a quick note of that now. Um, the other thing as it relates to the contract that was, uh, presented to you all is, and I know I've spoken to. Uh, not everyone, but most of you about the, the contract in terms of the recommended increase. Um, we obviously very much understand that not only is the city going through, uh, difficulties with the budget. But also, uh, want to improve, uh, on our side, GCSI, the firm, uh, our relationship with the city and really strengthen ties. So we are very open to keeping, uh, admitting the contract to keeping it to be the same amount that you have been paying. Um, with the, uh. The added bonus to also extending it, uh, instead of the three years, uh, to change it to two years to align with the lesson term.
Ms. Summerfield.
Yeah. Where you. Yeah. By side. Um, hello, Desmond. Um, so I think, um, and like my brain likes these things differently because I work with Lansing. Um, I think something that might be beneficial to everybody else who doesn't know what's going on with like the state budget. Like obviously we have district earmarks that folks in the legislature, legislature are always. Um, so like the dam, for example, is one of the legislative earmarks that I know DCSI has been involved with. But also like our state senator, um, so I think like also, I guess I'm just getting a little bit of like information of how this stuff works. GCSI also works within like all of the circles of like appropriations in Lansing. So like right now, the Republicans are in authority, so they sometimes have more of a role in getting meetings than somebody who's on the appropriations committee. So I think maybe like having like a tracker on like what, um, city like earmarks that y'all are working on with, with other members of the legislature and city and staff might be hopeful. Just so everybody can see the bigger picture, because there's like a handful of projects, um, that I think are actively being worked on. That others like might not know unless you're asking those questions.
No, you're right. Thank you for, for mentioning that, um.
Yeah, because obviously I, the goal is to bring home, bring home district projects, I can, um, like the dam removal and, you know, other things like. Road and projects and.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Therefore, Tim Brown.
Thank you. Hi, Desmond. Thanks for being here. Um, Mr. Jones asked really the original question that I was going to have about how we were going to track, um, you know, the work that's happening. But also, I guess, just for clarity, um, as I am a relationship-based person, a lot of the things that you just shared are written down about what we would change. We'll see increases in communication and connecting staff, attending meetings. Those are things that I expected to be happening already in previous contracts. So what I guess the question that I have is, how was communication happening between the city and you all? And are these new, you know, commitments based on maybe new running point for the city now instead of current? Or can you just give me a little bit of understanding how that, like, how were things happening before now?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, I can't really speak for, um, I just joined in, you know, October in this position. But, um, yeah, what I wanted to come out and just say, you know, my commitment to the city, you know, being more of the lead in the contract. Um, as I was transitioning, uh, to take over, I'm still transitioning, still. Uh, learning from Kirk, what projects are still outstanding and what are some of the things that he's working on. Um, and, uh, you know, Peterson and rest of the, um, state house delegation. Um, but from my understanding was that, uh, please correct me, but I'm not a city manager. But he had a close relationship and still does with the city manager, of course, with, uh, Mayor Richardson as well and, and constant communication. Uh, with them. Now, what that looks like on sort of a day-to-day weekly basis, I'm not, I can't speak to that. But, uh, I do know there is a relationship there. Um, I just wanted to take that time just to say, uh, I'm committed to doing all of these things. Um, and sort of reintroduce you to the firm and say that firm now is committed as well.
And I actually just wanted you to say that out loud. I think there are folks who know that Kirk Prophet has been, you know, believed. And so that you are committing as the new point person basically to, to do this this way and, you know, I just wanted you to say that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just want to say thank you. We had a big conversation at the coffee shop. Um, I think the changes are being placed and, uh, the questions on our cards are, are important. Um, my main concern is reporting there was, you know, they're having. Uh, close relationships with people on staff, but it's really difficult to figure out who's actually moving us forward on these projects. Um, lots of people claim, you know, uh, credit for the sense and just. Where it's considered everything, knowing that is.
Say no, um, you know, here, I would just like to say that, uh, my experience in working with GCSI over the years. Has really been a, uh, a very good one. Um, certainly, um, the, I recall our, the city working with them. Then when I became first joint, uh, council. Uh, I have can go back and name some of the projects and some of the issues that, uh, city, the city was really stagnant on. But however, uh, through Mr. Prophet and GCIS, we, uh, did make some progress. The money that we're getting now for fire services, um, is the full amount due is, is amazing. That we fought with that for years where, uh, and we have former mayor Farmer in the audience and she, um. I'm sure she remembers and also the former, um, city manager, Mr. Carizno. Remember when the state wanted to give us very, very little, or little to nothing for fire and particular, um, EMU. Uh, the work that we see going on now, the construction. Particularly for me, what is exciting and it's been over the years, work from Mr. Kirk Prophet. Is the, um, the overpass, the pedestrian overpass, walkway over ninety-four. I remember when I came on council, uh, that was on the agenda. But nothing has been done until the, through the years and with this persistence of GCIS. We now see it coming to fruition. Some of the other, uh, things around, even what we get in, um. Revenue sharing. There's been a constant push for an increase and not just increase from, uh, because of GCIS. But other lobbyists also that have pushed for, uh. Municipalities to get their full share from revenue sharing. So I, um. I, I've been one with looking, dealing with and working with the lobbying company. Is looking at the outcomes and not so much the day-to-day because I know things don't happen in Lansing. Uh, like right now, some things take time and so I've grown accustomed to that. And I look at the outcomes and I've seen really great outcomes from our relationship with this.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Miller, for coming.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for the time again.
All right, um, we come now to ordinance is first reading and, um, ordinance thirteen ninety-five. As we view, Mr. Cast, do you have that word? Do you have that, Mr.?
Uh, number one five four.
One three.
Yes.
I was like.
I'm sorry. One three nine. Or yes, resolution one five.
Yes, okay. So resolution number two thousand twenty-two, uh, dash one five four, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. An ordinance entitled City of Ypsilanti Tax Exemption Ordinance, dash eight four five West Clark, be approved on first reading in our zone.
It's been moved and supported. Do we have any presentation on that before we open the public hearing?
When did you, when did you send?
Good evening, Council. So in talking to certain council members and city manager, we did a lot of research on the actual costs of the, of what it costs provided for services to similar or similar apartment complexes throughout the city. And so that's been a question that a lot of people have asked. And so after a lot of digging and a lot of assumptions being made and a lot of various aspects, we have come up with two semi-similar properties that are, that we could pull definitive data on, provide the data that Mr. Fox asked for a lot speed. And so go to the next slide. I think everyone knows these numbers, but these are the numbers that are in total, the emergency services agreements that the developer will pay for the A forty-five, nine forty-five Clark Road Development are about a hundred ten thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. That's split between two different ESAs. The ESA one is for the family affordable housing development. And the ESA two is for the senior affordable housing development. And so those together, one ten, eleven, if you go to the next slide. So we kind of move that into thank you and kind of getting hourly, hourly rate for police and fire. And then based on the amount of runs, and I have some assumptions on the next slide to let you know. The amount total with including vehicle charges and for the actual benefits and all of the things updated, like about ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and twelve cents total. There were a lot of assumptions made, so I'm gonna keep that up there and I'm gonna kind of go through the assumptions that is on the next slide and we will receive. Sorry, it's not fancied up a little bit. It got done at about four thirty today, so. Trying to get all of these, all these assumptions are, interesting, put to the next slide real quick. The assumptions are a five hour average call run for police calls. We did that because obviously a homicide takes a lot more than just a voice complaint. You average those two together and talking to the chief lieutenant at the police front in five hours was as good as we could possibly get for paperwork, call, it's like that. We did use a three year police firefighter wage. Providing full healthcare, obviously not all the police and firefighters have full families, but we provided full healthcare in these assumptions. We used twenty twenty-one of his last four year we could use. And then we did do use a total of fifteen thousand dollar vehicle costs. Normally, when we're doing vehicle cost calculations for the city, we can average it on a two two thousand and eighty hour work week because everyone works forty hours. The police and fire run twenty-four seven. And so it's really hard to actually calculate an average cost per hour. So it's fifteen thousand dollars. Also, Andrew, if you go back up to like number up, so you can talk about these numbers. So obviously add those together and it's eighty-three thousand dollars roughly and fifteen thousand. So this is the average cost for the Arbor One and Town Center apartment complexes in twenty twenty. It's the best.
So a total for Town Center was?
Seventeen thousand.
And the total for Arbor One?
Sixty-five thousand.
So there were a lot more.
Yeah, Arbor One is a substantially bigger complex, but also it's, there's other, there's other factors. Town Center Senior, Arbor One has multiple buildings. This development will be two different styles of developments added together. So multiple buildings in the family, one building in the senior. So there's. Then maybe questions.
Mr. Wilkamp, you had just been, did you have something?
We have a public.
Well, okay. The public hearing is now open. That would like to make comments regarding Resolution one five four. You're welcome to raise your hand and come. You will have three minutes to.
Good evening. What particular item was commented on by someone who was pro housing, they said it's not built there, it's built somewhere else. But you've also heard that there is no other place in the county like that land in terms of the trees and the carbon needs capability of that area. So it was built somewhere else, part of land, scrub trees, it might be something else, but it will not destroy the trees. It will be destroyed in this project. And I'd like to also heart back a little bit about six groups. There was a comment made by a council member about the fact that apartments pay a hundred percent of state valuation. And according to your treasure, just like homeowners, they pay a fifty percent of the valuation.
Thank you. I'm here to speak again against the pilot. I hope all of you have had an opportunity to review the budget projections and the discussion provided by Mr. Kizer during the May tenth budget meeting. I passed out copies of his bar graphs for your reference. Excuse me. The bar graphs tell the tale of a city with a structural deficit where starting this year, starting this year, spending exceeds revenues every year, year after year, in spite of our best efforts. We are steadily eroding our required reserves towards insolvent. So what causes this structural deficit over which we have no control? State shared revenues. In the fifties, cities had the authority to levy sales tax. The state took this authority from us. They collect a uniform statewide sales tax and they share less and less of it with the cities over time. Fire protection mandate. The state requires us to provide fire protection for EMU. A state formula determines how much this service costs us. They have only fully funded their own formula twice in over fifty years, usually paying us about fifty percent of our costs. Headly amendment. This limits a city's ability to raise taxes on existing property as the value of that property rises. New construction pays more tax, but we have very little land left to build on. And if that new construction has a pilot, it helps us not at all. Size and age of our city, its land is only four square miles. We have very little undeveloped land left. EMU continues to grow. Nonprofits and churches continue to proliferate. All of these require services and none of them pay property taxes. My councils anticipated declining revenues and a risk for bankruptcy in nineteen ninety-nine. We began reducing staffing through attrition year by year in nineteen ninety-nine to prevent insolvency. When the old Ford plant was slated for closing but didn't actually close for several years, Mayor Schreiber's councils stockpiled those taxes into reserves. Your council has had a one-time infusion of COVID money from the feds. And so through careful budgeting and miracles, we have avoided bankruptcy so far. But you can see how every projection points towards bankruptcy. I refer you to your graphs again. And with the deficits starting this year, the worst case scenario gets us there in less than seven years. And that assumed a consistent inflation rate of two percent. And since May, the inflation rate has risen to nine percent. Under these circumstances, it makes no sense to give money away to a developer in the form of a pilot. In, in the Clark Road Apartments, if they're built, new residents will require additional services. The developer will pay to pave Clark Road, but this road then becomes the responsibility of the city. It will have a lifespan of fifteen years. To be continued. Thank you.
I appreciate the level tower working to try to come up with some data to estimate costs. But to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense and is inadequate to provide the, all of the costs and the projections over the future. So I would hope that you could obtain more complete and accurate data to help with that decision. I think there are other areas of data that are needed besides the financial and those are listed in terms of some of the expected reviews in relation to environmental impact. And in terms of the, all of the costs provided to the city of these to the residents, by the city, to these residents of three hundred and eight units, which could be as many as fifteen hundred people or more. So I would really appreciate your obtaining more data and more complete data that would be helpful to the decision making and sharing it with us, the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding? I'd like to thank for providing some of those figures for tonight and especially former mayor Cheryl Farmer with her data that she has and had collected over the years. And this really makes me concerned about the financial viability and what the city is facing. I really do not see how a good conscience one can approve this project to a for-profit developer with a tax abatement without understanding the length of time even on the agreement. And it depends on, hearing that it depends on his financing and what rate he gets. So what is the advantage for the city to this? Other than, yes, people could have housing, but what good is it going to do if the city goes into insolvent? Thank you.
I know I already spoke, you already heard me say what I have to say about this. You heard it a few times because we've had a lot of time to talk about this. We've had a lot of public engagement. We have come to some conclusions and I'm so glad that the previous commenter added other than people having helped him because that little asterisk at the bottom, her effort comment could not be more important. People need places to live. People living on the street are not climate resilient. People who have homes have an opportunity to live in our community in a productive way that's easy for all of us. And the idea that it's, we're better off not spending money on or not having the ability for people to have homes is just absurd to me. And I feel like I'm exasperated by this conversation continuing. And we're gonna have to do it again tonight. So looking forward to that next hearing. I'll write some better comments.
I just like have a note for the city attorney that, okay to give it to?
Yeah. Anyone else with comments on one five? Okay, being that, we have a closing.
Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one five five, resolved by the Council of the City of Slaney. That the public hearing for ordinance entitled City of Slaney Tax Exemption Ordinance dash eight four five West Clark be officially closed in our sum.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor? I've had. We will open council for discussion.
All right, I usually free flow this, but I wrote something, so I wouldn't take it as much time. It brought up earlier that the current doctrine doesn't have any timeframe on it. And I wanted to get clarification from Mr. Barr about where that needs to be.
Yes, the pilot is tied to the financing that the documents provide that the pilot will last as long as the finance. This is very similar to what happened at the old high school, with the financing there ended.
And the loopholes that were present with the old high school were now closed and so should not pose the same problems. I just want to get that up. Thank you, Mr. Brown. I thought you were going to vote on this ordinance because there has been no analysis of the economic impact of the development on city budget, which is in serious state as outlined by the projections provided by John Kizer at our meeting. Those projections show the structural deficit and the state decline and general fund until we bottom out in twenty twenty-seven and twenty twenty-one. It was just provided an estimate for labor and vehicle use for police and fire calls to similar developments, Arbor One and Town Center. I think Joan, Frances and Reagan for the meeting this morning and the efforts to pull those numbers together. By that estimate, the UCA doesn't look at that. Our list does not account for all the costs of these departments. Using previous budgets, the cost of those departments is three hundred and seventy-two dollars per person when multiplied by the lowest, the lowest number of occupants in these units, which would be five hundred and eighty people. This comes to two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars per year, leaving one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars short for the budget. What will the actual cost be? And start to talk this time. If we look at revenue, this development could generate one hundred and seventy-three thousand annually from relevant utilities and some of those have been taken out because they're not relevant to this development. The UCA then is a net loss of sixty-three thousand dollars per year. There are not many mechanisms for the city to generate revenue. People complain about the high taxes in the city, but the ordinance takes another property off taxable. We already have five pilots, as we said before earlier, correct me if I'm wrong, that reduce the revenue of the city with another coming in the next months. In the future, we need to discuss limitations to how we offer incentives to development. And any analysis, the only entity is an operating, entity is not operating at a deficit, but is current owner in capital. Some people have called us the corporate handle. A project previously provided estimates on significant carbon footprint of this development for reduced capture from mature trees and increased emissions. I won't belabor that point except to say building standards previously quoted for the development are considered by some that have been fifteen years out of date when they act, when they were enacted. And even more dated now, we don't even need to consider best practices as risks, but best affordable practice. None of this was considered in CBA or in the sustainability commission's only deliberation on this open last night. In that meeting, some continued with the framing of the false psychology of people are trees. I say we can have both and affordable, more energy efficient buildings that are healthier and consider tanks, cash and utilities. We've learned a lot on, in this process. I want to thank all the people who participated, including Travis sitting here. Been available and had great conversations and provided great information. All the people on the CEO committee have put in their time. And counsel for, for paying attention. There are many changes that need, needed in the CPO, our zoning and requirements for new construction within the city. And I look forward to working on this. Citizen staff and council. There are many changes that need needed in the CPO, our zoning and requirements for new construction within the city and I look forward to working on this, citizen staff and council.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Yeah, it's it's interesting to hear that. You know, the owner would consider just letting the land sit vacant somehow from. The issue with this property unlike some of the others that we've considered is that we don't own it. This isn't a public forest, this is private property and it could be used for whatever. Legal reasons the owner sees fit to use it for. So this is our control over this property is limited to our general police powers that we have over any property. And the ones we're asserting in this process. There seems to be some misunderstanding about what we can actually do with this with this property. As a government. Outside of this process and if this falls through. The last comment about taxes, I think there might be some confusion. About the difference between a principal residence exemption and a homestead tax credit. They're not the same thing and rental properties in fact did the higher mileage. There were also some accusations of ageism, but. And I think this is this theme is actually played out in multiple different. Topics tonight. But. I think maybe what you're hearing is not ageism, but. Some frustration from. A younger generation who's had to live with. Of your choices and is going to have to live with the choices that we're gonna make here today. And it's that's normal, that's okay. And hopefully, you know, I'll be old someday and somebody will be upset at the choices I make. I think the best thing is that when we become old, we start to seem backwards. Which means that. It costs some progress to happen. Coming generations no longer see what we've done as being particularly progressive or forward moving. And that's okay, in fact, I think that's the ideal, but. I think there's a lot of frustration going on and. For us, we. We just want to see something better and I think we are. Prioritizing people in this instance, not just because. We feel it's the right thing to do and not just for emotional reasons that someone brought up, but also there's a logistical reason. Our our capacity to do anything that's a local government with this property is rightfully limited. To this particular process. And the only reason we have any say at all in what happens is because someone has requested. Some funding from the city in terms of the of the payment of taxes. If someone from. Staff could maybe. Chat about what. What we would get in terms of taxes at the end of this pilot. Compared to what we're getting now. I think that. That might help some folks understand. Why this makes sense to do now, looking forward to the future. We've had this, I mean, we talked about this a lot, so. I think it would, I think it would be beneficial.
I'll let you know. So we have not ran those figures and I think the big reason why is we have no idea what a building will be valued in thirty years. And typically for the tax code, you depreciate a building over a certain number of years. They're gonna be the best one to tally how many years it's typical, I don't know, I think it's twenty years. Twenty seven, thank you. Um, and so that's where. Per accounting principles, that would be zero, but that's not how the tax code works. And so, um, how we typically do projections is we would do two percent a year annually. Probably it out for the thirty years, however. There's a lot of variables in that, so we typically don't do that. The only time we kind of do it is with a bronchial. Those never, those are always weird at the end.
Well, presumably, maybe this is where I was getting it, presumably it will be worth, it will be more than it is now. A tree stand or a forest or what you'd like, whatever you like to call it.
Yes.
Thank you.
To Mr. Jones Chan. The current owner bought this property for development. It it. He bought it to and he's had it with a broker the entire time he's had it. He's a wealth of knowledge, but he's businessman and he's looking to to make profit. The limited use of this, you know, this came up for consideration, the owner put this up. For consideration of the NAP program at one point. I looked over this documents, I contacted the county. To see why this, you know, why this was not included in that program at the time and. Basically, at that time, there was a rebuild initiative in in Washington County. They found those properties on the west part of the county that was to do this, they looked at the price of this. And they looked at the zoning for this and that was problematic. They also had an email from a previous city staff saying that. The city was not interested in anything with a hundred foot easement from the river from. And that anything that happened above the top of the block was just fine, so. You, why this, you know, this came up in the sustainability commission last night, so I'm going to put it out here tonight. And it's that, you know, the point was made that the county passed on this, well, the county passed on this because the city encouraged them to pass it, basically. So we're looking at this now because something didn't happen ten years ago and in order for it to properly be in that program. The owner has to nominate it for that and provide things and so the 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 tree. That I mean, in the tree survey that was done. Was done for that purpose to to put this into the network. And. That's what it is, I just want to clarify that information. Mr. Anzini seems a little hot cold on. NAP versus not NAP, clearly, you know, Kyle's company has put into this to be successful and good. You know, I think there's there, there are a lot of things that have happened in the past that. Have limited our hands at this point and so your your point of, you know, there's some good things we can do with this. But at the same time, you know, we're being asked to to accept that. And so we do have some control over that, but you're right, you know, what happens after this, if this doesn't happen, Mr. Anzini is not on. Side of what that is and he hasn't given us any indication of what that is.
I think that's good information to add, I mean, if this is a purely speculative land, which is to begin with, which you know a lot of them are, which you're not gonna build on. Um, so. Yes, if if nothing happens here in terms of affordable housing development. If this falls through, like in all likelihood, this will simply revert. The contract will be voided or this will just revert back to the owner. He could clear all of those trees and probably, you know, make a fair bit on the lumber if he wanted to. And then sell it, already cleared. So we got the problem both on the trees and he'd be able to sell the land again. Which would already be cleared and so that should make it worth more to a developer. Or we could at least get one of the things that we need, which is affordable housing development. And that's. And I don't, I don't mean to make it sound zero sum, a lot of options are, a lot of things could happen. I'm just looking at the two most likely scenarios and. It's about ninety percent affordable housing. Or, no, like just reverting back and trees get cut anyway. We may as well get the housing.
I clear, I basically don't want to.
I give it a, I give it a rating about ninety percent, I'm not saying I know.
In the past and and recent conversations, there's, there's things that could could happen.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I'm not. I don't know the nature of their contract, so, but this is, this is what we got.
But also places like the Asia Conservancy won't, won't consider anything if it's already in the contract, which it is.
This summer. I have a few things to say, but. I first wanted to acknowledge Brian Garinger couldn't be here tonight, here in comments that he wanted to add, and I found out. With that, he also, he's a student, a grad student at U of M in environment and sustainability. So some of the things that he thought were valuable to point out. Building more dense housing is actually the greener option because the way that he escapes out of the units, like that's housing as opposed to single family. You're losing less. There are other explanations, but it's way over my head, so I just wanted to put that, since you couldn't be here. And. In terms of a point that Mr. Jones Chan said. We don't have control over what would happen with this site. If this pilot does not go through, this is one way where we actually have power and control over what we'd like to see there, so. I do want to bring up, just for the record and so everybody on council and the audience understands that. There are consequences if if something were to happen and this is no longer affordable, as I understood it, I don't know, Kyle, could you speak to that really quickly? So everybody is clear on what would happen if just were to for some way no longer be affordable, like immediately what would happen, I think it's important for everybody to know that.
I'm happy to address that, this has come up in previous public meetings. I think the question that hand is, there is a senior affordable development several years ago that prematurely converted to market rate, there was some loophole. At the state level, it allowed that to happen. As we've talked about in the in various city council meetings and certainly during the thinking about this process as well, that loophole has been closed, that can't, there is no out. The out is effectively breaking long-term covenants with NISHDA, the state housing agency. Which extend up to the IRS and result in multi-multi-million dollar penalties that just can't be sustained. And that's the reason that that developers and owners of affordable housing don't break those covenants, that doesn't happen. And so on top of that, in the pilot agreement with the city of Ypsilanti, it is written so that if. And let me back up and say, we are a long-term affordable housing developer and owner. That's all that we do, so we don't, we don't even spend time analyzing how we could try to get around these, but these guardrails are in place for any sort of. That could arise, we have to play by those same rules, have those same guardrails. But further in the pilot agreement, it's been, the language has been added so that if somehow. Be irresponsible enough to accidentally stop leasing at affordable rates, the pilot immediately turns. So then we no longer have that benefit in addition to all the federal consequences that that exists, so. They're just so monumental that that you don't not abide by them. Pretty much that straightforward.
And I just wanted to say, you know, again, for the record. That I I am supporting this and I do, you know, I know that there are, there are folks who are not supportive of this and prefer it just to reconsider. I will not be doing that, I believe that this is a good use of that site in this circumstance. But I am also committed in working across the county to expand affordable housing in other places. Not just if see, it's a national problem, it's a county by problem. I'm looking forward to tackling the housing crisis on many different levels and the city of Ypsilanti started to do that, we have a supportive housing unit. That's currently in the works with Adlon Housing. We have two twenty mark park that is going to offer affordable and just a little market rate. More ownership to residents and both, both projects, two twenty and Clark Road actually. Have a period of time where current Ypsilanti residents are able to put offers in or apply for units, which I think is on really. Resident center and it meets the purpose of both CBA committees and the focus is to keep people who, you know, are from Ypsilanti and live here here. So, you know, for many other reasons, but those as well, I am supportive of this, the same same reasons that I was supportive of two twenty, which is also front commercial. I, you know, again, I. I think the callbacks that are naturally built in are are good, I'm glad that it's there and. I'm also glad that we went through months of this process to have these difficult conversations and even though. Not everybody agrees on this one, I think that we have all kind of learned. How to navigate such a big crisis and we are limited in Ypsilanti. And hopefully other parts, other communities in Washington County will join us in navigating this, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing that, oh, I last, at the last time when we asked for a post comment, I did ask for a post comment. To look at the finances. Not to say that I don't believe that the environment. Environmental issues on this piece of land are important. However, as stated. If this is not city property, it's actually property that is owned by an individual. And the individual could do whatever he wants to with it and do it in such a way that. The city would not be involved at all. However, I am concerned about the city's finances and I think that we have to look at it as a whole. So I did talk with. With Sam and. Sam assured me that we would be getting more than just a hundred dollars a year. Well, it would be two hundred dollars, one, a hundred dollars for each of the. Each of the. The buildings, each of the projects, however, that. We would be getting enough through the ESA to. To cover all the emergency services that would be needed for these projects. Again, like I said, I was, my concern was the finances for the city and I still am concerned. That going forward, the city would remain totally solvent. When I came on council, the city was looking at real dire financial situation. And I remember that our very competent city manager at the time began, before we actually reached the point where we were really in serious trouble. Began to make some adjustments and changes. And I do congratulate you on that, that you really saved the city at that time, Mr. Chris No. And so we, we're at a time now, we do have a few years, just about the same number of years that when we were at that point before. To really make some dire changes and I'm hoping and trusting that our. Very competent city manager now will be also able to begin to make some necessary changes to keep the city out of. Of bankruptcy, but I am going to vote for this. This project, I know that there are many things that. That I don't like about it, there's some things that I do like about it, there's some things that I wish we could change, but we can't change them. And I, there are some things that I think that really could be better, but there are some also some things that actually really could be worse. And and the main thing is that this is not city property. I think that is the underlying. Point here and that the develop, that the owner could actually have gone a totally different way. And we would have not had any say whatsoever. With that, if there's nothing else from council. I would ask Mr. Helengar to call the role.
Mayor Bo-Tan Brown.
Yes.
House Member Summerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yeah.
House member Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chan?
Yes.
House member Wilcox?
No.
Motion carries with five yes, one no, one ask.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank, uh, staff for all the work that you put in, I want to thank you, uh, Mr., uh. I just, I've, we've talked so long because of, I was going to, Kyle, I was going to try to call your last name, but, um, Kyle. Thank you for, uh, as I stated earlier, thank you for being so pleasant to actually and easy to work with as a developer. Appreciate that. And I, um, I am really sorry that we could not, um, have made. The, uh, changes that. And then had a project that was satisfactory to everyone. I really, I am sorry for that. I thank all these, uh, our residents who were very diligent, uh, I appreciate that. You know, one of the things about city government. You know, it, it takes more than just the council to run the, uh, to run a city. If we don't hear from our residents and our residents don't participate, uh, if. Everything is left and depends upon the seven of us sitting up here, the city is in big trouble. We need to hear, we need to have participation from our residents, so I thank you. A special thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Love for, um, for continuing to come, as I do, and others that have followed this whole process. And I am truly sorry that we could not have gotten exactly what everyone wanted. Um. Resident, uh, resolution twenty twenty-two, one by six. I believe you have that, Mr. Sweet?
Yes. Our resolution number twenty twenty-two dash one five six, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that an ordinance entitled City of Ypsilanti Tax Exemption Ordinance. Dash nine forty-five West Clark, be approved on first reading and I so.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments or any presentation, any words from staff? Free to be for the open public hearing, Mr. Wilcox, and I agree with you, okay? Okay, all right. Okay, if nothing, uh, from staff or the developer, we will open the public hearing. Mr. Love.
Thank you, your honor, counsel. Um, two things, uh, first of all, um. In the community benefits meeting, uh, the question came up about what happens when current pilot gets over. And Kyle, Phil was saying. And he said, oh no, this won't go on the tax rolls. What'll happen is, we'll come back to you for another pilot because the place will need some input, painting, refixing, et cetera. And we will request another pilot. His words. Mr. Wilcox was there as well. Other of you. Um, and second item, when council, when staff supported, uh, mentioned the two things, A and B, they reversed them. Nine forty-five is the, uh, public housing and eight forty-five is the senior development, unless they changed it. Kyle, have they changed the layout?
I was wrong.
You was wrong, okay, so those are my two items, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment, Mr. Love?
Thank you. I'm sure city council members know much more than I do about this, but from what I have read, I wanted to respectfully disagree with your comments about we have no control. Of our private property. You control the easement through those two, these two pieces of property. Therefore, you can dictate what happens. And you also, as I understand, that have a role in approving whatever gets done and goes through plan permission and whatever. So I don't understand a lack of control. And, but like I said, I'm not a city council person and I don't know all of the laws and the ordinances. But that's my understanding, because you have that property there that was set aside for an extension of green roof. And because these parcels are but that, why don't you have control? And then the second thing is that I was reading city ordinances about trees. And it looks to me that, um, you do have control there too. Because there is ordinances about what can be removed in terms of trees that must be done. And it appears to me that if you go ahead with this development, removing all those trees, that that's in violation of existing city ordinances. So I don't understand. And, um, I would hope you would reconsider, um, about what happens in relation to the current ordinances. And your control, you control a pilot, you can say yes or no to a pilot. So it's in your hands.
Thank you.
So to clarify for our newest member of council, the city had control over this property due to the fact that we controlled the easement between the two properties. It could not be developed as a single property due to that, but this council has already relinquished control over that easement. Um, to Mr. Lust's point about pilots, the city currently carries four pilots. Two of them are new, but two of them have been ongoing for decades and they've been renewed. And that tends to be the what happens with pilots, they get renewed and renewed and they never do go back on the tax rolls. The fifth pilot we had, uh, expired in twenty eighteen, that was, uh, the anomaly. They don't usually, are, they aren't usually allowed to expire. That pilot paid the city nine thousand dollars a year for fifteen years. Now that it has ended, the property is assessed at two point three million dollars. Generating a hundred fifty-two thousand dollars in taxes, of which the city receives forty-five thousand with the county and the schools receiving the balance. So to do the math here, forty-five thousand dollars now minus nine thousand under the pilot, that's thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Times fifteen years or five hundred and forty thousand dollars in lost revenues. Now, if we had a solid budget, the anticipation of future lost revenues from a brand-new pilot would not be an issue, but we don't. And that's why I keep coming back. So tonight I'm asking you to be especially, this financially cautious, as the previous councils have been. Democracy is the first casualty of an appointed emergency manager. They make all decisions unilaterally, they silence the voices of elected officials, they silence the voices of the citizenry. The second casualty is the assets, all of which can be sold to pay off debts. Rutherford Pool, the senior center, Partridge Community Center, the Freigh House, the DPW equipment can all be sold off. Please don't be the mayor and council that push us into bankrupt, bankruptcy. I'm particularly disturbed that you are saying okay to a pilot, we don't even know the duration they're asking. Um. The other thing is, I, if we want to continue to have people want to live in Ypsilanti, we have to be able to keep it safe. Keep it safe from violence, from fire, from theft. We can't do that if we can't afford a proper police and fire department. When I was first elected, people were reluctant to come here. We had two, several drive-by shootings the summer of nineteen, uh, ninety-five and we had a reputation as being unsafe. We had vacancies in public housing, people with vouchers didn't even want to put their name on the list to get into our public housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda. Thank you, I heard a couple of things that I thought were interesting and I'm going to respond to those. One being that our, our neighbors here think that we should have government overreach into private property, that seems really. Not something that would encourage democracy, so, um, I would just like to put that out of everyone's mind. And two, the pilot going on beyond the period of pilot means more affordable housing. Yeah, that is a huge target for the city. And three, I want to reiterate something that I said several city council meetings ago about school funding, which is very complicated. It was hard for me to grasp. Um, I had to read a lot about Prop A, which is something that I was not in Michigan, um, or. Old enough to vote when that decision was made. And, um. It has caused a lot of challenges to school funding, but one of the things that I do know about school funding is that. It is primarily determined by the per pupil, um, in classroom. Be the kids that show up to school. Um, what makes a kid show up to school? Being invested, living in our community, that's one reason. Um, having stable housing so that they're not. Bouncing between places, not able to catch a bus. Like that helps kids show up to school. Um, these are the things that would actually affect our school. So I am extremely defensive of any comments about how we're going to lose out on money for our students when we're going to do nothing but gain on money for our students. I also wanted to say, um, in the one minute and eleven seconds I have left, that I want to thank you for the first vote. Um, I want to thank the five council members, including our newest council member, so I'm looking forward to getting to know, um, for voting yes. I also want to share my disappointment, again, in my two city council members for word two. Um, one who's here and one who is not here tonight, and I know that Steve, you're going to want to talk to me at some point in the future, let's get that conversation set up. But I am disappointed, um, and I, I mean, I still want to work together with all of you as we move forward as a city, so thank you so much.
Thank you, and sit. There any other speak, Mr. Tuce?
Mayor Richardson, I want to thank you for being the first mayor. That has ever allowed me to be on the agenda for a presentation. All the other mayors, they, you requested, and because it was Lee Tuce, they wouldn't let it happen. That's all the mayors that we had, including Sheriff Farmer. They would not let it happen, but I thank you so much for being the first one that ever granted me that opportunity. Summer Phil?
Mr. Tuce, right now we're talking of, uh, the.
Oh, I thought it was, I thought it was.
It's not just open town.
No, we're not even close. We're not even close. It's a public discussion.
Oh, public hearing is closed?
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry, but you got my message, oh, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's good enough.
I thought you were.
I know, it's never done.
I understand you walked in in the middle of the hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the public hearing also regarding three four five, uh, nine four five? Oh, okay, Mr. Myers, I'm sorry, but we're going to speak. Oh, city manager, you have something that you want to. Say he was talking, oh, all right, uh, all right, seeing other, no other hands, could we have the closing resolution?
Resolution number two zero two-two dash one five seven, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, that the public hearing for an ordinance entitled City of Ypsilanti Tax Exemption Ordinance. Nine forty-five West Clark be officially closed and I so.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, closing the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Uh, hearing is closed, uh, any discussion on the original or? Yes, but.
Yeah, I just want to, um, to reiterate some things, uh, no longer the newest councilman. Um, uh, I, and I'm also a real estate broker, so I think there's some confusion, I said that we don't have any powers, like. I did also add that we don't have any powers aside from our police powers, which is true. All the things you mentioned are part of that bundle of powers that local governments have, so things like taxation, zoning is cheap, condemnation. Um, we have all those powers and we only have those powers. Beyond that, we don't. This. Their request for a pilot is the only reason that we're here discussing what happens to this property at all. And so I just, I just want to get that out there, but I think the, the crux of things is the same as it was at the last one, right? We're not, we're not going to get all the things that we want, you know, we, we're not going to get a development. And tweets, let's just back on landworks. Um, so we have to choose. And it's, when we're choosing between two options, there's going to be some people that are dissatisfied. Frankly, that's. We're trying to make the dissatisfaction as, as small as possible, but, you know, uh, both sides are satisfied, it's kind of a good compromise. So I think, you know, we're all losing a little. And that's just unfortunately the way it is this time.
Thank you, any other council member? They say none, Mr. Helengar, would you call the role?
House member Summerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
House member Sweet?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chan?
Yes.
House member Wilcox?
No.
Sheriff Poton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes, one no, one ask.
Thank you very much, thanks council, and thank, uh, again, thank all the overhangs out to participate. In this very important decision that we made. Thank you, Mr. Razor, for, um, I look forward to continuing to work with you. Uh, council, I would entertain a motion to extend our meeting until eleven thirty.
I'm going to extend to eleven thirty.
Or? Is the move that, uh, second that our meeting will be extended until eleven thirty? And I'm going to take a five-minute break now so that we all can stand and fresh and. I can put both by a warm start.
And I want to follow.